Hello. Let the call be in order. Roll call, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Ms. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Here.
Mrs. Conkle.
Here.
Dr. Wobblie.
Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Mr. Ayers. To approve the agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I will need approval for a closed session today.
I move that the board hold the closed session as provided in Section 21.51J of the Opening Meeting Law to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the district would have to pay, or lower the price the district would receive for the property.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Conkle. That the board hold the closed session as provided in Section 21.51J of the Opening Meeting Law to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the school district would have to pay, or lower the price the district would receive for the property. Roll call, both, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Dr. Wobblie.
Yes.
Ms. Damon, it is the Pleasant Valley School District to provide the finest academic and action-packed programs in the state, not in some things, but in everything, not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests. If you'd like to address a board-regarding non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Yes, if you could please state your name and let us know the topic.
Keith Stein, it's in regards to my discussion last, or a couple of weeks ago, the last board meeting. I received the minutes from the board and read them. And since District Parent Keith Stein addressed the board regarding Iowa House File 802 at providing for requirements related to racism or sexism training at and diversity and inclusion efforts by government agencies and entities, school districts, and public post-academy institutions. Mr. Stein expressed concern over the indoctrination of students regarding matters of race, critical race theory, and the disenfranchised appearance. I'd like to address the fact that I did not mention critical race theory. Those are words you guys, or whomever did the notes, put into there. I came to speak about two specific teachers that we've had problems with before, who handed out a lesson plan, or a unit, that was, to me, I'm sorry, very offensive, and also racist in their tone. I'm asking the board and everybody if you guys do admit this critical race theory is being taught, because you guys used the word, I did not. And is CRT part of our curriculum at the school? It's not part of the state. House State 802 Bill does address this, and does not specifically say critical race theory either in the bill. So I'm just trying to find where CRT came from, because I did not use the word last week. I didn't use it once. I was addressing two teachers, I've been told there's three teachers involved in this lesson. I've also been told that in that class this last semester, in American literature, they read zero books. We spent time on this. This is not American literature. Do we have rope teachers? If so, what is the enforcement of this? If the board is approving it, if the administration's approving it, if the principals are approving it? And this is against the law. What is going to be the enforcement of this? Are they going to just keep doing this? Because again, last year, this was addressed by a certain teacher, and I'm not going to use her name, but there was problems, and it was brought up. And I'm still, we're going to deal with it. And again, last week, or two weeks ago, I asked, is it being dealt with? I am concerned, as a parent, that we're going to have a charter school show up. The school board does not need to approve charter schools anymore. I'm wondering, too, do we have more parents doing homeschool in this district? Again, I don't want to see less parents coming to our school. This is a great school system, folks. You guys know it, the parents know it, that are part of this. My other concern about this, where do we go from here? I spoke about it last week. Again, it's not an agenda, it's not being spoke of. I understand that the rules are new, and I've also heard people say that the state passed this legislature, passed it, and the governor passed it. Well, I will say I support it. I also support the fact that the state and legislature took the effort to get our kids back in school, 100%. I don't believe, if it wasn't for the state and for our governor, we would be back in school 100%. And also, we had the fact that the masks were now an option. Again, the state and the legislature did that. And they've been voted in by the people. You guys have been voted in also. I appreciate all what you do. But I just do not understand how critical race theory was put in my mouth, but I did not use it. That's all I have, and thank you very much.
My name's Zach Holfer, and I'm a parent here in the district, too. I've got two sons in elementary, so with Cody. I just want to piggyback off what he said, and just to let you guys know, we're paying attention to what's being said, and we're coming for your seats. Okay, we know who's up for reelection. We have a large backing. I would vote for every single one of you. If you're going to answer the questions the way we want you to answer the questions, if you can go on record and oppose critical race theory in all of its related forms. I have no problem with anybody's political affiliation or anything. But what we want is a traditional way of living that we're, we want for our children to grow up in. And that's definitely not a part of it. With all the divisiveness that's around in the country right now, to teach some child that they are better, or have more of a chance to succeed because of the color of their skin is something that we do not stand for. It's racist. And so we're going to continue to push this agenda of eliminating it, and making sure you're all on record of saying that you're not in favor of it. And that's my sentiment that I have today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who wants to address the board? Yes.
Fred Dodd, District 3. Hiding. Well, I support them in what they're saying, and as a taxpayer of the district, I'm going to be involved in seeing how you answer this. But I have another issue. Is anything being done about the pickup problem at Pleasant Valley School during the, I had a stroke a few years ago, during the dismissal at 3:00? It's a real problem. I live in Shadowbrook, and it's a quarter of a mile from the front door of Plugview to where the last car is on Crow Creek Road. And anybody trying to go around that, go down the hill, is in danger. And people, not everybody is in that line to go and pick up kids. Is there anything happening? Is it on the schedule for anybody to check that out? Because it's a real legal problem. At this fall, if you don't have police at that corner directing traffic up and down that hill, and you know, there's going to be an accident.
We, I just, real quick, we started looking at that last year when we had the number of people who were dropping their kids off and not riding the bus. So we're hoping that'll be different here this spring, or this fall. So we are, and we had a police officer out there last year, so we'll look into that.
We have about anywhere from 10 to 15 cars now. In addition, from quarter to three, to quarter after, because they've got their kids that get to school, or they get to walk down the sidewalk and avoid the traffic, and now they're going in and out.
So, no, we'll, we'll take a look at that. Yes.
Hi, my name is Jim Borchardt. I live in Bettendorf, in the Shadowbrook area. About 26 years ago, my family moved here from California, and we moved to Iowa specifically because of the excellent educational system. At the time, it was the third best in the country, and California was the 48th. So we selected this area. I also want to note that Pleasant Valley has the highest SAT scores last recorded in the entire state of Iowa. I think it was like 1350. So my purpose is to make sure, or help to make sure that the educational excellence of the system remains. We had two sons who went through, and they're extremely successful because of the education that they received at Pleasant Valley. So I guess the, I spent some time reading up on critical race theory, and I found out, according to what I found, is that the root of critical race theory is critical theory that was founded in the 1930s. You know, and you've heard it, and according to the literature, it says it was founded by Karl Marx, and the German school, Funde, Funde is the one who actually began this. So what I would say is, if any of you have not read up on those two things, I would suggest that you do it, because according to what I read, and this ideology has been taught at university levels in the educational system for the last 20 to 30 years. So in other words, young teachers, as I understand it, I may be wrong, but young teachers may not even realize all they're doing is they're teaching what they were taught to teach, which is kind of frightening. So it's up to you guys to understand, you know, and you might say, well, if they're only doing what they were taught, then it's not our problem. It's more of a systemic problem. So I don't know where to start with this, only that knowledge is power, and to understand what the issues are, and for you guys to take the appropriate action. So thank you.
Anybody else who wants to address the board?
Hi, I'm Sarah Benyon. Before COVID, I had the pleasure and honor of working with Margaret and Peter at the Junior High, I was the accompanist for three years. It was really awesome, and I love them and appreciate all that they do, because I think they do a fantastic job teaching our children music. I do have a concern, there was a couple of times conversation came up concerning culture appropriations. And Margaret mentioned that there is actually a list of songs that are banned now from being taught in the schools. And from what I was understanding with our conversation with her about culture appropriations, is it sounds like it's the lead-in to critical race theory. And my concern is that this stuff has been taught for years already. And with it, with this being in the, you know, in the focus of everybody's attention right now, I'm actually very concerned. We've had three kids graduate from PV. We love this school district. We have two more, our last two sons, one in high school and one in junior high right now. And I would love for them to keep coming, but if this is being taught, and I intend this coming school year to spend time in the school in their classes to listen to what is being taught in their history, and actually, if it's being taught in music, it's being taught everywhere already. And I want to know, and I want to be aware. And if this continues to be taught, I would have to take my kids out of this school. It would be a huge sacrifice for me. But I care about my kids' future. I care about this community's future, and this is very, very troubling for me. So my next question is, when do we hear from you in response to all of our questions right now? I'm sorry, this is my first school board meeting as well. I should take more, but I plan on doing more. So anyway, I appreciate you, and I appreciate you listening to our concerns and responding. Thanks.
Anybody else who wants to address the board? Yes.
One other comment. I don't think we really know, need to know too much about CRT, about BLM, or about 1619 Project. All we need to know is that they are based on Marxism, communism, and socialism. And if we want that in the school system, then you're going to have a crowd here. If you want to take action now, keep us at home on Monday nights. It's up to you.
Okay, anybody else who wants to address the board? I just want to, just one little note, I know everybody's talking about the critical race theory. Just want to let you know that once that House Bill was passed, we contacted the Department of Education, who we are under, and asked them to give us guidance, and they don't have any guidance right now. So at this point, right now, we can't answer any of your questions, because we don't have any guidance from the Department of Education yet regarding that.
Louis, can I say one thing?
Yeah.
With that said, we need guidance from the state and Department of Education on keeping Marxism and racist teachings out of our school. That, that program that she put together was a racist program. And I don't care if it was three teachers that put it together. She put the thing out there with those people, and it's racist. And it takes the guidance from somebody to determine if it's racist?
The bill is encompassing on a lot of different things, and we just need context on that.
So Keith, that last conversation with the DE, which was about two weeks ago, was it, they said they would be putting out guidance.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry. Please speak up.
So what he's referring to, we had a meeting with the DE with all the superintendents about two weeks ago. And at that point, the DE said that come the 1st of July, they will have written guidance regarding House File 802, and what that might look like. So I don't know what the state is saying right now, or what's going to be in that written document, but we're waiting for that part of it right now. And we'll see what they come back with. That's all I can share with you today. I mean, that's, there's a bunch of legislation that came out. There's a number of them that they will have additional guidance in writing. And once we get that, we will review that as well. I mean, that's just what they've come back with.
So are you aware that this is going on? I just have a question. If we're in a class, if I'm sitting with my sons at school, and hear of this stuff that's being taught, and I report it to you or to the principals, what will be done at that point? What, how, what do we know?
And in all the situations, we'll go through, review what we have, what the guidance is. And yes, I'm not saying we're teaching that now. I mean, just let us get a chance to look at what this looks like, and how we address it moving forward.
What we're telling you is that it is being taught right now. It is being taught.
I understand, and that's the thing that we will have to look at and determine. Where is that, where is it landing? How is it being addressed? What's the conversations that are taking place? Let us look into that further, once we have more guidance, too.
Can you give us a timeframe for that?
As soon as, like I said, we are waiting for July 1st, right now, to come back next week to see what that looks like, and we will start looking at all the cases we have, and what our options are. I mean, that's, as soon as we have it, that's what the DE said when we talked to him last week.
So we're okay with what was taught in high school?
And...
I'm just, well, I mean, I just don't understand if we need state guidance. Are we okay with what was taught in high school? That's my question.
Keith, I'm not going to go into a debate right now.
Everything, everything has been taught in context. Again, this is not an agenda item. We're just giving you some context, because I know you guys all want answers. And I told you before that we will, once we know what the Department of Education is going to give us guidance on, then we will look at the context and the curriculum, and make sure that it follows the guidance that has been given to us.
So when will it be an agenda item?
Let us get through July 1st and see what transpires.
And then it will for sure be an agenda item.
As soon as we have a way, how we're going...
And how do we make sure, how do we make sure it's an agenda item? Because we, I feel like things get kicked down, kicked down the road pretty easily here. No, they do. My experience with you has been kick the can down the road and let it go. So when do we know that it will be an agenda item?
First of all, we don't kick things down the road. We address things.
In my experience...
Okay, at this point, when you watch the minutes, you will see when Ms. Damon puts out the agenda, then you'll know when it's going to be on the agenda. We still don't have any guidance from the Department of Education. I told you right now, a lot of people are, have to get in context what this bill says, and make sure that we follow that guidance.
So before the beginning of school year, will it be on the agenda?
I can't, I can't answer that question, because I don't know. I'm not going to make any false promises, because I don't know. So, okay, we're not engaging anymore. We're not engaging anymore with an agenda item. And so I'm going to go...
Second time, I just have one comment to just...
And so, well, this is just...
Is it the general, you know, practice of the elected members to wait for guidance before making their own decision? Because I feel like some emotion out of you. Someone up there to say that you stand with us, or that you're against this racist teaching, would probably, you know, be a good step forward for any of you to do right now. I'm giving you an opportunity. Any of you?
This is not meant to engage the board.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Anderson, do you have anything?
No, this type.
Mr. Ayers?
No.
Ms. Hoskins?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Ms. Conkle?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Brockman?
I would like to take a little bit of time to recognize the Pleasant Valley Track Team. They have recently gone to state and finished their season. And just to, to point out a few highlights of their season. For the Senior Squad League, Pleasant Valley placed sixth in singles, and they were just one bird from the top five. They placed fourth in handicap. And then another close race, two birds from the top three. Doubles, they got second with one of their senior squads. Intermediate Squad League, they placed fifth in singles, second in handicap, and second in doubles. Individual Squad League, Michael Lember placed second in varsity singles, a huge honor. Robbie Curtis, third in JV doubles. And Addie Weirman had an amazing year with second intermediate entry in the singles, first in handicap, and first in doubles. And then these teams went on to state. This was, I think, the second week of June in Cedar Falls. And the intermediate squads had a third-place single squad in the, I guess that was the intermediate advanced. And then in the intermediate squads, they had a fifth-place division entry, and then also a third place in doubles. The fifth place was in singles, the third place in doubles. As far as individual state recognition, varsity division second in handicap was Michael Lember. Intermediate, again, entry second in singles was Addie Weirman, first in handicap, and first in doubles for Addie. So amazing results. And then to cap off all of that, Michael Lember finished in the top six for the league in the high all-around of all the scores combined. And after a shootout, he ended up making the all-skip team. So my, my hat off to all the track team coaches. It takes a big group to manage this. We continue to have more and more PV kids involved in trap. So this is kind of a nice opportunity for kids to meet others and to be involved in a, in a sport outside of school. And they, they had another exciting season and brought home a lot of trophies. So a big congratulations to all those students and the coaches.
That's excellent, that's great.
International, yeah.
Wonderful. Ms. Dixon?
No, I do not have anything, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Lewis?
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. Zimmer, can you hear me?
Can you hear me, are you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Do you have anything?
Well, you know I never go a meeting without one.
That's true. Okay.
At the last meeting, it was brought up about the effectiveness of our personal finance. And I wanted, of course, I wanted to pass along that this spring, we had a number of students that passed U and I's Financial Skills for Smart, Smart Card exam, earning them three college credits for this course. And so those students are listed with you. And this semester, according to the instructor, Ms. Murphy, we doubled the number of students who had to take the exam from the fall. And the students' pass rate remained the same. In the fall, there were seven students that bypassed it. And this spring, we had 14 students who took the exam and seven passed it. So very, very pleased about that, and would encourage students to consider taking that as an elective. And then lastly, in athletics, Coach Kenny Wheeler was selected as the Iowa Corey Girls Trap Coach of the Year. So I wanted to share that with the board.
Great. Wonderful. Right. Ms. Damon?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Struce?
Yeah, just one, want to send our condolences to the family of Ray LaFrenz. If you did not know, Ray passed away here about a week and a half ago, unexpectedly, while in Arkansas. He leaves behind his wife Cindy of 45 years, three children, Austin, Renee, and Brian, who are all graduates of Pleasant Valley. Ray worked for the district for 41 years, retired two years ago. So very sad for the passing of him, and just keep his family in thoughts and prayers.
One thing I want to recognize also, this is, it's not a, a sport that we really recognize much, but, and I will get you all the names, Ms. Damon. But this year, we, the Quad Cities Row Team actually competed nationally. And they, they competed against all the other teams in the whole country. And the Quad City Rowing Team got gold and silver in, for women. And I believe they got silver for men's. And the, and all the three kids who won are all PV kids. So I will get the names for you on who won, but that's a real big national recognition, because they, they were competing against, you know, rowing teams from all over the country, and they won, so it was wonderful.
That's why, Brian, Mr. Zimmer says that it's hard to hear us and wondering if we could pull our microphones closer.
Sure, sure.
He's, he's not able to hear and thinking if others are attending online.
Okay, sounds good.
This is our conversation.
Okay. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Dixon, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Approval of bills, general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $412,676,160 in payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Mr. Ayers, of the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Nutrition Fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $29,890.87 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hoskins, second by Ms. Conkle, of the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Elementary-Junior High Activity Fund.
I move that the Elementary-Junior High Activity Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $6,552.32 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, of the Elementary-Junior High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. High School Activity Fund.
I move that the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $52,940.92 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Hoskins, of the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Management Fund.
I move that management fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $1,718,000 in payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Mr. Ayers, of the management, management fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Capital Projects Fund.
I move that capital fund, capital project fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $609,722.92 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Conkle, of the Capital Projects Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Pebble Fund.
I move that Pebble Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $72,100, excuse me, $89.68 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Dixon, of the Pebble Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Debt Service Fund.
I move that debt service fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $2,742,677 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Ms. Hoskins, of the Debt Service Fund warrants be issued in the, in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Internal Service Fund.
I move the Internal Service Fund warrants, 6244 through 6251, be issued in a total amount of $462,90.50 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Brockman, of the Internal Service Fund warrants, 6244 through 6251, be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Trust Fund.
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $8,350.38 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Dixon, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, going to all business, 2022 legislative priorities. Mr. Struce?
Just again, legislative priorities for IASB to submit on August 11th. Kind of want to have a conversation again tonight. You had a chance to look at the information from last year again, the beliefs and priorities, and kind of just having us look at moving forward, what hours might be. Um, as you know, next week, we'll have legislators, next week, our July 12th meeting, we'll have legislators Chris Canoyer and Gary Moore here present with us to kind of go back and look at 2021, give us an, uh, reflection update. And then also, number two, looking ahead to 2022, as to what possible priorities might be at the legislative session coming up here this next year. So you had a chance to kind of go through and look at those information from IASB. You know, as I kind of outlined in my newsletter to you, kind of look at some of the beliefs there. You know, as you look at where we are today, number one, definitely, um, school funding in that area with the SSA, the 5% dropout, the at-risk that we've talked about before that Chris has mentioned many times at the state level, but it's never gained traction as she's tried to work through that. You know, a lot of things would fall under school funding if we want to write another, um, priority around that for our district. Uh, another one on page five would be the education's role in economic development. And you know, and we're looking at economic development, a thing to think about there is, you know, we have future-ready Iowa. And even with future-ready Iowa, is there ways to still increase the amount of money that they're putting towards that? Uh, for example, in our regional, um, planning that we have here, which involves 18 school districts in our area, we receive about $300,000 a year towards that, um, to divide out amongst 18 schools. So it's not a lot of money for manufacturing, welding, uh, career guidance, a lot of the CT areas that we are trying to increase. So it might be worth us looking at trying to write a priority around that to see if that can gain some additional traction at the state level there. Um, and then again, early childhood, it was definitely a push with preschool. Early literacy would fall underneath those areas from a belief that IASB has had and that our legislators have tried to work through the last few years. Um, and the same thing with the resolutions, again, those same areas. You know, so as you look at possible priorities, I'd be interested tonight to kind of get some of your hearing, what you're thinking, uh, so that we can bring and can craft some possible, um, statements for our next meeting, July 12th, for us to review. And then to have those ready to go come the August, first board meeting in August. So again, we're ahead of schedule, just trying to put these things in place to get us thinking. Listen to Chris Canoyer and Gary Moore next time we meet to kind of help finalize those. Um, but again, it could be around preschool, could be around school funding, and then again, maybe somewhere in that CTE area, um, as we look at trying to move programs forward for all kids in our district. So just some ideas, thoughts from you tonight as you think about this, and then take that information and can craft, um, some possible statements for us. Remember that IASB legislators would prefer we have two to four. Um, and sometimes we can write a couple ideas into one depending upon how we craft that, that message. So just open up to you to say, you know, what input would you have as we look at moving some priorities forward?
I apologize because I wasn't here at the last meeting, but is there any, uh, just one of the topics that popped up was that COVID remediation. Is that anything that we have a targeted concern on and maybe it's more directed towards Cindy, but is that anything that we need to make a priority?
You know, right now, we are going through, um, we've had, we increased the number of students at the high school level who are taking their credit recovery courses this summer. We increased the number of students that we would typically have at summer school so we widened that scope. Um, then we also had our launch to fourth grade, which we are finishing up. So a lot of those things there. We will be getting our IISAS data back here, our test state testing here relatively soon, hopefully. And we can break that down and compare along with our MAP data to start making goals to see where our, um, weaknesses might be from the last 16 months and how we put a plan in place.
Okay. So we're still assessing it, right?
Correct. Waiting for the data to come back. Yep.
We have bumped up our numbers of kids. Our, our whole summer school is, we, we typically serve about 40% of the students that we invite. That's how many families choose to join us. And typically, our number's around 180 students that attend the summer school program. This would be K6. This year, we have 230 students registered, so we're really excited about that.
Yeah, that's great.
Gives us great opportunity to give kids, you know, the, the goal would be no summer learning loss and to jump right back into the fall with students, so, yeah.
Okay, well Cindy says hopeful, that's just the place where we, we, yeah. It's across, it's district-wide programs.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you.
What else do other people think about the priorities?
What's happening at the state level with mental health? I mean, I feel like that's going to be something we really need to focus on next year. So what would we look at for that?
You know, mental health is, is a good question. Um, this last legislative session, they put in, you may have just read that Governor Reynolds approved $20 million. Um, and that's in partnership with the University of Iowa and trying to create kind of a resource base. Again, they have not come up with a lot of information, so we're looking for guidance coming in, what that might entail for us as a district. Um, but they're trying to look at it from a research standpoint and also potentially having information, whether it's curriculum or what it might be, um, back to school districts. So we'll watch that. You know, I think from what we have seen over the last, mental health has been a huge priority. We've had it as one of our priority statements. Um, I think it's been, what we haven't seen is a lot of that mental health coming down to the school level and support yet here. So we're kind of watching that closely. We do have, we've contracted with, um, six individuals for mental health next fall, which will be in our buildings. So we still have a huge priority moving forward to that. We'll meet with the six school-based therapists, uh, here in August, but our principals have already reached out to them and the therapists are making phone calls already this summer to families to get, uh, mental health in the schools. Also, if parents would elect it, that's above our counselors, what they would normally be doing. So again, still a big priority for us as well.
But do you think we would leave that off of our priorities just because it is being addressed with that program that could offer us additional resources? So would, would our priorities be better spent in other areas if they're kind of already focusing on that?
Good question. Um, we could keep it on there, or we could write it within the school funding piece potentially, you know, some method around that. But it's, it's clearly important, we could also write it with, um, you know, we've talked about the 5% at-risk dropout prevention money, if we could maybe increase it there, because we could actually use some of that extra 2.5% that we could get from the state and help offset our mental health, school-based therapist there too. So could be different ways of writing or crafting that idea in there.
Any other comments? I, I think that, uh, school funding is very important. We have to have that as one of our priorities. It is on there every year, even this last year, we only got 2.2%, 2.4%. Clearly, when you, when we do our negotiations, we find that that's always an issue. Uh, 2.2% on a continual basis is, is obviously not going to be sustainable for doing all the things we want to do. So I think funding definitely is important. Um, and of course, with that extra funding can help with things like mental health and other things like that. Um, I, I agree with, um, Jody, we've had mental health on our priority list for the last several years and it's at least drawn attention. If we continue to keep it on there, are we potentially then not allowing another priority to take, to get some attention? And I actually think that, um, preschool and early literacy is really important. I think that's really something that's been a goal for, I think, the whole state to do that. And, um, I think that is a priority as well, is early literacy and, and preschool. So I would not be opposed to maybe potentially including that one as well. And maybe bundling in the mental health with the school funding, as you mentioned.
And the other part with SSA or school funding would make sure it's not only just increasing from 2.4, but also making sure it's on time in terms of that 30 days when they first go into session.
Right. So those are sort of my initial thoughts. Well, we know by our next meeting, um, kind of what Jean has brought up with regards to the COVID remediation, will we have the information by then, you think? Or Dr. Lewis, will we not have that information yet?
I'm sorry.
With regards to some of the, the testing, um, that we've done at the end of the year and seeing where we are from a COVID remediation standpoint.
Yes, so we will, we're going to start the year planning to provide rich review and we will be able to, um, start with our building leadership teams looking over our, um, Iowa assessment data and our map data. The, the, the data that we can share out comes in August, isn't that right?
At least so.
And we've got some on-demand reports that we've been able to use internally, but the state is sharing that, um, we will have ISS data ready to share publicly in August.
Okay. Right.
You know, again, going back, that's just like an example of, you know, we used to, Iowa assessments, we give Iowa assessments, we could give them in the fall, I shouldn't say fall, late fall, or you could do it in the spring. We always elected to do it in the fall because then you got your data back, you could use it right away. With ISS now being a window from basically our spring break to the end of the school year, when you can give it, you're just not getting your data back till August, which is, we wish we could give it sooner to get the data back to be more effective in all of our interventions, but the state just has put it at that point. So we'll keep working fast until we get it.
Okay. Those are, those are my thoughts. Everybody obviously needs to think about this. We have to make a final decision, um, at our August 9th meeting. So if you want to take some more time and read over the, the, um, information from IASB that, that might give you some context. Okay, there's no required motion or anything else on that, Mr. Struce?
No, I'll, I'll just take this information you gave tonight and try to craft a couple ideas that we may have and then next floor, maybe talk about further too.
Okay.
Just one question, is anybody interested in, I know McKeel has been our representative for several years. I'm actually not able to attend the conference this year, so I would be out. Um, but I'm sure anybody will consider. Would you be that?
Yes.
I probably won't be.
Okay.
I would consider.
Okay. Great, wonderful. Awesome. Okay.
I'd be kind of that, just with family commitments, I can't commit at this point, so.
So it looks like Molly, Molly has expressed an interest and I'd be more than happy to have Molly participate.
And that's in November.
So it's the day before the conference?
Yes, on that Wednesday.
It's like, what, November 17?
It's that Wednesday morning usually. And then the rest of the session, afternoon sessions, most of us will go to if we're going to attend the meeting, so.
Molly, it's going to be perfect weather that day. We have some nightmares to share.
All right. Um, now moving into new business, kindergarten through 12, student-parent handbook updates. Uh, Mr. Jones and Mr. O'Leary.
So we'll start with Mr. Jones this evening, kind of going through the update you on changes from last year's standpoint. Just a reminder, last year, we had a number of, um, current administrators, a couple current administrators, those who were doing internships, go through and walk through our handbook and make a lot of adjustments to it at that point. So our handbooks are actually really in good shape right now. Um, but we'll start with Jason on some changes they're looking at from a high school standpoint, and then we'll go to Colin, and then I'll cover just a couple of changes from the elementary level as well. So Jason, if you want to start, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, good evening. Uh, and I've shared with you, uh, the summary, but then also the handbook. And so you can see some minor language changes, uh, but don't really change the, the nature of the policy. So, um, didn't include those in the summary, but I'll just go over a few major changes that we had, uh, this year. The first one is, um, we added a school security drill section and that is really just, it's been our practice, we just haven't had it in our handbook, and that is a state requirement. And so we outlined, uh, that we're using Alice and that we're doing at least one of those drills, uh, per year. Typically, we do a, some sort of tabletop exercise and activity to get students thinking about things, and then some sort of live simulation is typically what, what we do for that. Um, we've added the second paragraph of the school resource liaison officer. Um, the intention there is just to better represent what our school resource officer does for our students and for our stu, for our staff. Um, and, um, so that's just the language of, of really what, what they're doing, and you're going to hear about that later. But, um, the third one has been added under fighting. And, and this is something we've been monitoring, monitoring other districts, monitoring our own, uh, district and building. Social media adds a level of challenge for us. And so, uh, for example, if students decide they want to fight and that gets out on social media, and we have a lot of students respond to want to see what happens, um, that can create a very unsafe environment. Um, obviously for the two kids who are doing that, uh, but then also for the additional spectators who might get involved or, um, um, be wherever the fight is going on. So, uh, what we are adding to that is we're adding a level of legal enforcement to this as well. So, um, in some fights, there might be an assault charge or things like that, but if it's a mutual combatant situation, um, the assault charge wouldn't, um, wouldn't hold. So, um, we have a, uh, basically a disorderly conduct charge, uh, that will refer to our school resource officer for potential citation for that. And then we would work through our juvenile court liaison, uh, to try to keep out of the, the court system, um, but try to do some education and learning around, around the, uh, the situation. And then the second thing is, students respond, are, are showing up to that fight and then using their, their cell phone to record the fight and the, the issues that that causes and then sharing that on social media. Uh, so we wanted to outline that that is also an infraction of our, our acceptable technology use. Um, and so that's a minimum level two, uh, infraction discipline and, um, typically has some sort of restriction on their cell phone privileges moving forward as well. Um, the final section is on the Chrome, Chromebook policy, just because now we are a one-to-one policy, we want to update our handbook, um, to kind of outline the district responsibilities, student responsibilities, replacement costs, theft, things like that. Those are the basics. Do you have any questions about any of that?
Were there any issues, like, I mean, since this was the first year we were one-to-one, how much issue did you have with damage or loss?
Um, I don't have specific data for that. I can get that for you, Jody. I would say, uh, it was really pretty minor. Um, you know, the typical, uh, lost the charging cord or things like that, but, but not a lot of damage or anything like that. Uh, so I think it's been really successful, especially in the speed that it had to be, you know, you know, executed.
I think it's important to note too that, um, if a child damages or loses something, that the family's held accountable. So, you know, they're asked to replace or repair, so.
Yeah, but we found that the students really did a good job of caring for the device.
I've heard of one theft, the kid's car at work or something was broken into.
At the junior highs, very much the same. Maybe I, I made every single phone call home. So for one person to be able to do that for that many kids, it was primarily carrying it by the screen and screens were cracked. Um, but we never had a theft at the junior high. They took really good care of them.
And just, you know, if it does, let's say it's a cracked screen and it needs replacement, we'll have a replacement laptop for them to use. And then we try to quick, quickly fix it here as we can and then get it back to the school, to the child. So again, hopefully not without a device during that timeframe either.
I know that one family in particular was like a complete, the Chromebook was a complete loss. Um, but the district worked with, instead of charging them to completely replace the Chromebook, they were able to part some of that out to be able to use for other Chromebooks and then were able to accommodate the cost a little bit. But most of them were like $25 or $30, maybe 50.
Um, with, with regards to the fighting, Mr. Jones, um, so what, when does it ever ask it to the level where you do have to involve law enforcement rather than just doing a school resource officer referral? Like, is it a certain amount of times and then they have to, um, be?
No, I would say it's usually just taking the event at, at its, you know, on its face. And so, um, some events rise to the level of, you know, getting the, the school resource officer involved right away. Um, typically, that's not the situation. We're usually able to stop something really, um, before it gets too serious. Um, but, uh, but we, we want to try to be preventative in this, that way, and, and try to make sure and outline that this is serious and it does involve, um, law enforcement, especially when you're disrupting your learning environment, um, in cases where there's large groups of students interacting during the school day.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you want me to go?
Yeah, go right ahead. Your turn.
Well, good night, everyone. Pleasure to be here. Thanks to Jason for doing pretty much all the work. And Mike as well, but we only have outside of trying to be a seven-twelve secondary concurrents. We had one extra add-in outside of what Jason added, and that was schedule changes, and that's because it wasn't in the policy at all. So we added very similar things with school security drills, the school resource officer update, lost textbooks and novels, the criminal activity piece, and then fighting, and then of course the Chromebook policy that wasn't part of it, so. And then there was the same updates, update of minor table contents and staffing stuff, so.
I think every year when we look at these manuals, we're gonna be thankful for that group of teachers last year that streamlined it all for us. I think that was just an excellent use of their, they were going for a degree, right?
Their admin degree, and actually two of them were hired on as our dean of students here this, for this next upcoming year. So they get a great job.
They'll definitely know the key pill in the manual.
Yeah.
For the handbook.
Yeah, so just to clarify, I, I mean, but fighting is the only one that really come, I mean, because the textbooks and the Chromebooks has been communicated multiple times, so. Just a refresher on how is it communicated to students, does policy change? Not that I'm expecting anything, but like on a fight, right? So some kids like, oh, I got in a fight, I didn't know, you know, now I'm getting a missing.
Yep, yep. I know exactly what you're talking about. So what we do, we hold class meetings at the beginning of every year and we go through any handbook changes or rule changes as well as some, you know, some of the bigger items of interest for students as well. So this will definitely be part of our, our presentation.
Now, can I be questioning any problems from myself, or?
So you have no change, you have no change in the backpack policy?
I, I couldn't find, you know, looking through ours, I didn't find anything specific with backpacks. Ours had lockers, and I was just in that, I, I didn't necessarily see anything with a heading of backpack. I know Jason had mentioned the high school is not, and we typically follow everything the high school does.
So again, so no backpacks again?
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah.
We're still doing that?
Yep, so they will, the expectation is that students will be using their lockers.
Okay.
Does the backpacks are allowed this year because of COVID?
Right, ex- exactly.
Right.
Thinking that won't be necessary.
Exactly.
So can we communicate that maybe sooner rather than later, just because it's, well, dang, I bought this little, like, backpack.
Absolutely. They still use them, I just can't take them to their classes.
Right.
Right, so.
It wasn't a idea last year, you know, they have those two backpacks now.
Yes, and, and that was our plan, is to send out something to parents, maybe early August, something like that, so they kind of are aware of some of the things that we're going back to that were maybe different.
Do you know in other districts that are one-to-one, if they also have backpacks that stay in the locker and the kids carry their computers? Is there any, I guess, potential in the past we also were one-to-one, it's like they're carrying their own computers in their arms? Is that making it more risky that those computers are now dropped or they're not, or are they safer because they're in their arms?
Fortunately, I came from a district that was one-to-one, so I had several, eight years in that experience, and no, you didn't see an increase or decrease of, it's really how they carry it. You know, if, if they're laxatistical with it and they're carrying it by the screen, then you're gonna see damage, but there should, I, I don't foresee a, a ton of an increase, but there, there possibly could be without the protection of the backpack. I mean, that's an obvious, I think.
And, and we do offer a protective case at no charge to the family as well, if they would like it for the Chromebook.
Great. Have most people taken advantage of that?
Yeah, when I handed them out at lunch, you would have thought it was a holiday. I mean, kids were super excited.
And they had the casing on at that point?
Correct, and that was probably August, September, it wasn't right away because they were delayed in shipment.
Okay.
They, I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we're at a hundred percent kids using them, but that's right away when kids have them broken, they don't have the protective cover on it. Could, could this have helped?
Yeah, and just picturing all that my daughter carries on a day-to-day basis to junior high, and granted she'll have her locker, and maybe it's a, you know, I don't wanna say a girl thing, but potentially girls do carry more than guys, and that's a lot to juggle. So I think that's just something that might have to continue to be, you know, as next year as they have these things, they'll have less textbooks, so that's less to juggle, so.
That's right. My experience in the one-to-one world is you have less and less and less that needs to be broken. So there's just some old habits that will need to be broken from, this is what we did prior to the one-to-one. But it should really lessen, a lot of, all your things are online now.
Yeah, yeah, we're seeing more and more online textbooks, and, and we'll continue to monitor this as well, just to see if this is becoming an issue.
But they still have, I mean, girls can carry their personal.
Yes, yep.
As far as dress codes, I know there weren't any changes with that, but has there been any, you know, issues with, I feel like that was something that was kind of the forefront of the brains of certain students in our district being concerned with, you know, their right to dress how they want to dress and things like that, and I noticed there weren't any changes. Have you?
So we, we are changing some of the language of the dress code section, but it doesn't change the policy itself. But we were really trying to use more gender-neutral language. So for example, instead of cleavage being a sort, it was chest exposed, and so it wouldn't be appropriate for a male student or a female student to, to, to have that, and so that would be in violation of the dress code. So not a change in policy, but a change in language to make it a little more gender-neutral and clear that any student, whether male or female, is, it's inappropriate.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
And all our changes match theirs, so. It seemed like I'm not talking a whole lot. Like I said, he did a lot of the footwork, so.
Colin, next year is all you.
Oh, great. I hope there's not many changes.
Oh, yeah, oh, then, all right, so is there anything else regarding, any other questions? Otherwise, I will take a motion on this.
I'll, I'll say the elementary, yeah, so elementary same one, we put in the school security drill under emergencies, school resource liaison officer, and then also district Chromebook. Remember, district Chromebook is just grades five through twelve, so it'll be in there and explain the grade level. The other change that they had was underneath excessive absences on page nine. And the reason why they changed it was it talked about if a student was absent fifteen days in a row, they'd be dropped. Well, they're not really dropped at elementary level per se, and so really what they, as you read this, it's more about the process we use when a student misses fifteen days of school. It doesn't have to be consecutive, but if we hit fifteen days of school at the elementary, the building principal or the dean of students, a counselor, and usually Pete typically will be a part of that meeting and say, okay, how do we get things in place moving forward? What does it look like to help them be proactive to getting in school and not being absent? So that's what this just explains a little more in detail about having that meeting, and it could be sooner. Sometimes we might have it at day ten of absence because it's happening so quickly, and the pace is going so fast, so they may want to get in front of it and not wait to fifteen, so that's also explained here. There are some times in which you'll see in there, we do have situations throughout the year where a family might leave for more than fifteen days because they have to leave for some reason. We do drop a student at that time, but when they come back, we re-enroll them, and that's just per guidance from the state. So that was kind of how the policy was written originally, so we just revamped that to be more specific.
So letters still sent home at ten?
We send a letter at six, nine, and fifteen is when we send our three letters. And at any time, any one of our administrators can make a phone call if they would like also, and they can always schedule a meeting before that. But really fifteen is when we start looking at, okay, where are we at and is this gonna become a truancy issue? And how do we stop it so it doesn't become a truancy issue, and it's more a proactive measure.
I have a question regarding the example you just used about like the family who may have to leave for an extended period. Like I'm thinking sickness, travel, you know, because we have a lot of dual citizens, whatever, so is there intervention we can offer a family now because of this one-to-one access online learning modules, stuff like that, or if, of case-by-case basis, but that they would have knowledge to work with the school?
Go ahead, Jason.
So one of the things that, that we're doing right now, actually, we're using Edgenuity as an online program, and we're using that for credit recovery with the support of our teachers. So in, in some of those cases, they can still remain potentially our student and then use this online Edgenuity program with instructional support from Edgenuity for, for that. And so then, when they return, they can, it's maybe a little easier to get.
It also depends where they're going. If they have internet access, they still can be accessed to their Google Classroom. You know, so there's a possibility to still see what is happening through that. But if they don't have internet access, then it's just pretty much a, they're on their own till they get back.
I just, I just want to, you know, make sure I'm thinking, continue to think outside the box, because we do have tools that we didn't have a year ago, or, you know, eighteen months ago.
Sure, agree.
So does the conversation become a little different now?
Yep, and having one-to-one access makes it a little bit different too. Yep.
Ryan, do you have the elementary, do you have the packet open there? Like, are you looking at the elementary packet?
The changes?
Not yet, but just like, well, I guess the changes are in there, but like if you look at page one and page two of that manual, it doesn't list Forest Grove anywhere, but then it lists Forest Grove, like, the administrators on page three.
Yeah, so this is just the one from last year. So when you look at, for example, we will have Forest Grove in there, and we do not have the Forest Grove, you scroll down to page three.
Yeah.
Forest Grove is there, we've listed the principal, a nurse, and counselor. And we do not have a phone number yet, but we'll get that hopefully here soon, before the start of the school year we'll have it, but we're waiting for that phone number, so it just says to be determined, but we'll get that final draft and all is put in there.
Any other questions regarding the handbook changes? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board approve proposed changes to the student parent handbooks for the 2021, or, excuse me, 2020, 21 school year as presented. Is that what we want?
No.
Okay, let me start over. I move the board approve proposed changes to the student parent handbooks for the 2021, 22 school year as presented.
Second.
Lieutenant Miss Dixon, Second Lieutenant Miss Brockman, that the board approved proposed changes to the student parent handbooks for the 2021, 2022 school year as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Haskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Now, the student resource officers' end of the year report. Deputy Faw and Deputy Baden?
This is, you guys got a really, this is exciting to come to speak to you.
Yes.
I've done a lot of standing in the back, so I'm Deputy Faw, if you don't know, I'm the school resource officer at the high school. This is Deputy Baden, well, this is actually casual Deputy Baden. He, he's the school resource officer at the junior high. So we, every year we're asked to compile kind of some of our activity, and it's taken several different forms. I believe in your packet you have what we submitted this year. Not in that packet, though, is some stuff that happened kind of outside of our relationship with the school, in the sheriff's office around our structure and our leadership, so I thought it'd be interesting for you to have that context, and what the sheriff's office, like where they view us in, in their, in their organization. So prior to last year, we were underneath the day shift patrol sergeant's purview, which put us under him with seven, eight other deputies who are doing all kinds of other things. Meaning patrol operations, evidence technician, training, and then I think that was all the ones that he had for day shift, and some of those, yeah. So now, however, what they've done, the sheriff has reorganized a little bit, and so now our sergeant, Sergeant Logi, is, we're only, it's the two of us are direct reports to him. The school resource officer at the college is a direct report to him, and then the evidence technician and the training, the training deputy. So they narrowed down his scope, so he has a lot more time to work with us, which is awesome.
He also was wanting to and did attend the National Association School Resource Officers training. So he understands
Yeah.
that resource officers are there as a resource for the kids, not, not there to arrest kids. We're there to, to help them and, and do everything we can so it doesn't get to that point. So we now have a supervisor who is aware of that goal that we have in serving the students and the teachers at the school, which is a huge benefit for us.
Yeah, so just so, more just so you guys are aware, kind of where the sheriff's office sees what we do, and I feel like that's a huge step for us from a leadership standpoint, that we have someone who's very in tune with what we're doing in charge of us, so to speak. So what, what you will see in the packet, though, is some of our data. I and Deputy Baden collected, so that, the pie chart you see there, that's got all that, all those different categories of activity that I had over the school year, is drawn directly from our computer system we use to put in our reporting for our calls for service. So a call for service is, anything we do that we feel we want to document in case later someone has a question about it, or, you know, if you called nine-one-one, it would generate a call for service. If, you know, if you get into car accidents, a call for service, all that kind of stuff. You'll see there all sorts of types, I think I had a hundred and fifty-ish bits of activity, and there's every, just a little bit of everything in there, you know. Car accidents, you see things like, there's one, a stolen vehicle, actually we covered a stolen vehicle in our parking lot. There was a student's parent had reported stolen and they got it back, but they never removed it from the system. So that was an interesting phone call to make that day, but, you know, so the majority of the calls you see in there come in as public service. Public service is, is kind of a catch-all category for our dispatchers. You might not believe it, but there's a lot of different things people call the police for, and there's a lot of different things we get involved in. And so not everything kind of fits neatly into a box, and public service is a really, a really good place to put a lot of things. And a lot of what we do is public service stuff, community-oriented stuff. You'll see in there things like, in the notes I added, stuff like, we give a kid a ride home, right? A lot of times that happens to be our kids that we interact with a lot, which puts them in the, I guess, the category of at-risk kids or kids that are, kids that we work with because they get, they, you know, involve themselves in some behavior that's not always the best behavior. And then we get, and then we get to know them and, hey, I need a ride home today, I missed the bus. Hey, no problem, we'll take you home, right? Or I overslept and my mom's at work and I need a ride to school, we'll go pick them up. Especially if they're our kids who are truancy kids, right, or our kids who are at risk of not attending. We do everything we can to try to get those kids to school, and sometimes that means they get the ride in the police Uber. So.
As Mr. Strus entailed, when we get, when I get involved at the elementary schools in those meetings, those are the things I'm looking for, and they say, well, you know, I gotta be at work at this time, he has to be at work at that time, and it's no fault of the kids, it's the parents trying to, to, if, if they're in a catch, I'll step in, I'll be those kids' rides all the time. So a lot of my public services are going to be just that. Or going and checking on a kid that, you know, didn't call, we don't know where the kid's at, especially with you, with the high school, they usually, you know, a friend will know where they're at, so, but when you've got a third grader at Hopewell, we don't know what's going on, that's the other issue. A lot of it too is our, in my involvement, speaking of, of different schools, Hopewell, occasionally this year I had to go to that because I have a kid that took off running. Well, I go to make sure that, you know, you don't call nine-one-one and Bednar shows up and they tase a kid. I'm there to just keep him from going into traffic, so the counselors can get him back to the school. So a lot of times I have to get a call for service because I need more resources, people to block off a road, so cars aren't zipping by and a kid doesn't get hit on Devil's Bluff. So those are, you know, a lot of things we do, we don't get calls for, but if I have to call dispatch and say, hey, can I get two units to shut this road down, everything is fine in the school building, and, and so that we get those calls as well. The suspicious calls, I don't want everybody seeing that and worrying that there's suspicious people coming into our schools. Unfortunately, Mr. Strus was a, a victim of one of my suspicious calls. We had a couple of men driving around in circles at the junior high in a vehicle with no plates, and I was not aware that he had a new pickup truck. So I called out a suspicious vehicle, I lit them all up, said hi, sorry, sir, went back to work in the building.
So I was screaming from the high school, I didn't know what was happening.
So we, we get things like that, but if I'm gonna activate my lights, like, and people are gonna wonder what's going on with it, so we do get a call for service for that, for a suspicious vehicle. We also get a lot of parents that get to know us, their kids are at the junior high, where I'm at typically, and they'll see somebody, you know, walk in on Thirty-Fifth Street Southwest with a backpack that they feel looks suspicious, and they're worried about the school, they're more comfortable calling me because they know me than calling nine-one-one, it's not really something they feel, should I call the cops for it, should I, should I not? So we will get a call for suspicious for that as well. Those calls, none of them have turned into an arrest or a threat to one of the buildings. So when you see those, please don't be alarmed, that's just what our dispatch categorizes them, it's the best thing we have to categorize them as, so.
So you'll see, obviously, we, we get involved in all kinds of stuff, right? So public service is a big one. The other thing that falls into public service that a lot of people ask about when we have enforcement activity, a couple of things that we do, like in my working with the high school and Pete at the junior high as well, that we take very seriously are things like drugs, alcohol, and tobacco at the school. We feel that, like, in, in talking with Mr. Jones and Mr. Erickson, at the high school, I'm sure Pete the same, that, that the, there's really a zero tolerance when it comes to that, from what the school's gonna allow to have at the school, and then what we do from an enforcement standpoint, we, we agree, you know, like for a tobacco citation, the first time you get caught with tobacco or nicotine products, which would be a vape typically at the school now, you know, the fine is seventy-five dollars. It's not so burdensome on a student to pay a seventy-five dollar fine that we feel like that's us really, really going after them. However, it's enough to remind you, by the way, you, you made a mistake and we need to change the behavior. It gets higher as you get to a third offense, I think it's three hundred and fifty dollars for a third offense. So we worked in conjunction with the school and their consequences that we feel like, you know, that's enough. It's not so much that it seems like we're doubling down on a student with school consequences plus the, the citation, and it's like this huge thing, but it's enough to say that we all agree this was a bad choice. And then with drugs, especially, again, a lot of what, what we had at the high school this year when we had it was THC, THC vape. We worked very closely with Kelly Fernwirth, who wasn't able to be here today, our juvenile court liaison. We worked very closely with Kelly Fernwirth, who wasn't able to be here today, our juvenile court de A's on, and, and we worked them right into a diversion program right off the bat with her. We do, what we would call it, in-house diversion, I guess you call it, where I work directly with Kelly, we do a referral. There's a certain bit of community service, and then, and then also a class that the students have to attend. All of that after conversations about where the student is when it comes to things like addiction, right? Because at the end, the goal is for the behavior to stop. You know, and my conversation is what the students are always about. Do we have an addiction problem that we need to address before we talk about the other things? Because that's really the most important part, is that the, the child stays healthy and that we have them fresh and available to learn in the building. So we worked, you know, I think we had three, four cases of that this year. You know, in a, in a COVID year, you would think that you would, it was just, it was just all weird anyway. But the vaping really did pick up towards the end of the school year, once we came back to 100%. And I, I couldn't tell you exactly what that is. I think that what, what we had, if you look at the, the history of it, is in 1718, we had probably our worst year ever. I think that's what the chart shows there. When it comes to vaping, like 50-some cases or something like that, it was like, or 40-some cases, it was very high. That's when I feel like vaping was very, very popular, right? And it was kind of, had kind of come and there wasn't very much known about it, and the students didn't know about the health effects. And it was just a kind of a cool thing to do, for lack of a better term. Then we ended up with the, the, the health crisis of the vaping where kids were dying, right? In, in the fall of 19. And that, that really shut it down. I believe when we had our presentation last year, we had very, I think we had six cases in, in that year. So kids really took that to heart, right? And then as, as everything, you know, I think we're back to the kids who would have engaged in that risk-taking behavior before are back to it now with the vapes. Most of the kids that we work with, it's not the same student population when it comes to just kind of all of their overall metrics that I was seeing in 17, when we saw in 18, 19. It's a lot different students. It's back to the students that probably when I was in high school were smoking. You know, it's like that kind of group of kids, which, you know, we educate and we talk and then we, we provide. But that's probably the biggest piece of enforcement that we've done all year is this vaping stuff. Pete didn't have any at the junior high, right? Yeah, didn't have any at the junior high this year. So maybe the kids are, you know, maybe they're starting to learn. I'd like to, I'd like to hope. I also think that the schools, you know, not allowing it at all has really helped a lot. And even though we had more this year than we did last year, it wasn't back to that previous level, so.
Last year was not a full year for statistics.
Yeah.
So you took a cut a couple of months out of the year, and you get so much each month on average, that's going to skew those numbers. So, so when we look at our numbers, we had to look at those and keep those in mind as well, so. And, and I'm, I know you guys probably know about it more than I do about the loss of school days and everything else, so I don't need to go there again, but that's where another, another indicator on those numbers has been for us.
So the only other stuff in the, in the packet that we presented to you that I added in there was I, I've still been collecting my data around my interactions with students, just kind of breaking down, you know, who comes to me, what we talk about, where we talk about it, and all that. And so that you see a couple of charts in there that kind of have some of that data. Again, not as much data as I had previous years because of the, when we were hybrid, I really had very few students come to me throughout the year, because they were just, I think there was just a lot of putting your head down and getting to work and, you know, not, not as much time for, you know, when the kids were in the building, they had a lot to do, you know. I joked with my wife, I said, our son did not do well through the hybrid. He just struggled because he's a social kid. I don't know how, where you got that. But, but like I said, I said, the thing is, every day for him is a Monday when we're doing hybrid, because every day he comes to school, it's a Monday because he just had a day off, you know? And so, you know, because we were on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, because of the F, you know? And so I said, so I get why it's hard for him, right? And so it felt that way in the building when we'd have, I just didn't have as many students coming to interact with me during hybrid because it, it's kind of, everybody was operating on a Monday, you know? But the, that data's there, and then new for this year, based on what we talked to with Sergeant Loggie, who worked with Sergeant Quick at Davenport PD, is we're going to mirror their demographic data that they're collecting. So the, you know, as you may or may not be aware, the Davenport School Board's had a lot of concerned citizens about what their SROs at their school district do throughout the day in their building. And, and so the Davenport Police and the ci, and the city and the school districts and all that kind of came together and they said, well, we have a certain, certain number of metrics we want to measure just to see and make sure that we're, we're getting the results that we're hoping for, and we're going to collect that same data. So it'll be demographic data around people we issue citations to and take enforcement action with. Or if we defer enforcement action and choose a separate intervention, collect that data so we can have some solid numbers. Unfortunately, we only have three months worth of data, so it's just really not even worth giving to you any of that data because there's not enough of it there. But hopefully next year, what we'll see is a real nice data set that, that gets us the expectations of what, gets us what we would hope we would see.
Also understand, rest assured, as we have the utmost respect for the Pleasantville Schools, I don't even have assurances for my kids' schooling, but we go to Davenport. Understand that if that pressure or those questions ever come to you, we will have that information for you. It's not something you're going to have to ask us and we're going to have to go find. We will have that, any note, my supervisor will be able to get those for you if someone ever did ask you, are they writing tickets to this, this, you know, whatever's going on? And, and we look forward to proving that we're an asset to the kids that we serve. So just to rest assured, you'll have that in the future if you ever put under that as an elective official. I think that's everything. Any questions? Do you want a short answer, you can ask me, or what you can ask you?
I actually think it's, it's surprising to me that we've had that P3 app for four years. It doesn't seem like it's been that long, but remember that when we first got it, it was a grant? Or it was sponsored by like Crime Stoppers?
Crime Stoppers still pays for it.
They're continuing to do this, so we do it at no cost for the Pleasantville Schools.
So, yeah, for a shameless plug, so Crime Stoppers, they, they run a 5K that we've done the last, well, we did two years ago, then last year it got canceled. We raised enough money in that first 5K to pay the $10,000 fee that Crime Stoppers had to pay to the company for P3 so that we could have that at all the school districts in this area. And that race is going to be again this August in Moline, in case anybody's curious about raising the money so we can pay for it. To your point about P3, you know, our, our tips have really leveled out to the point that we get what I would consider mostly actionable tips. We get a few Deputy Bodden smells tips, but I just forward them back over to him.
I just wanted to say thanks for all the work that you do. And one thing that was interesting to me that I didn't realize, I should have realized was a part of your job, I didn't, was just the conversations that you provide to the students about your careers and how you got into your careers because knowing some little boys, I think you guys are close people in the world, it's nice that they have someone that they can talk to in their schools as they start to plan out their futures. So they're not just in their enforcement roles, they're also there as a resource for them on some of the things they can do and options that they have.
That's the part I would like.
I'll piggyback on that. I look at, you know, the pie chart on student interaction data and the fact that 36% is initiated by students, that's telling me that you are both approachable and that students feel comfortable, your presence in the school. I see you a lot at events and during the school day, so I think that suits volumes that you guys are there and that they feel comfortable coming to you. So that's, that's very important. I guess one question I'd have would be, when it's staff-initiated, what, what does that look like? What, what are instances where it's the case?
Yeah, to give you, a lot of times what will happen is sometimes a staff member will come up to me and approach me with like, hey, this happened, or I saw this, or this student did this in my presence, and they don't, they're not sure who to report it to, you know, or they think maybe that it's maybe something that I might want to get involved in. And so then I'll go follow up, you know? And, and a lot of times, probably more often than I can tell you, the staff member maybe just doesn't have anybody else, and they see me and they say, hey, Deputy Faw, this is going on. And then I, a lot of times it's a redirect, right? It's me finding a counselor that needs to go talk to that student. If it's a student I know, I go find him and grab him and chat with him, and then get him with the appropriate counselor or the appropriate, you know, school administrator, whatever that looks like. Most, I mean, that interaction generally is about, hey, something happened, we need to go take care of that, and so. But I get emails, I'll get an email from the staff member, hey, I saw what looked like kids vaping in this bathroom with this timeframe. And I'll look it up on the cameras and I'll grab somebody and, you know, record. This student, like they were really upset today, I don't know what's going on, but they were, they were pretty frustrated. I go grab them and chat with them, he needs to go talk about my, about kids or younger. Okay, well, this isn't, this is a professional.
They're on their own.
Yeah, I just wanted, save your career, buddy. I just wanted to say, Jeff's comedy hour, so.
I need fundraiser for your app.
What's that?
Remedy routine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
So, so are 911 hangups, just like they call 911 and then they just hang up and then?
Yeah.
And is it like a prank or is it?
No, 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 it's almost always a pocket dial or they're watched, they're sitting funny and they're watching, whoop, whoop, and then it calls 911.
We also had some that were coming from the buildings, and what happened was the, the federal commission on, on the phone said, if anybody hits 911 in any sequence, it has to go through as 911. Whereas for to get 911, you have to hit a nine, get an outside line, hit a nine again, and then hit a one, and then hit a one. So not hit nine for an outside line, a one for, you know, a long-distance call, because a lot of our, our phone calls from the schools, I mean, you guys paid the phone bill, or long distance. If they pause too long on the one, or they don't hit anything after the one while they go to look the number, it would call dispatch as a 911 call coming from the building. So we worked with the school, after I figured that out, we worked with the school, and now I have to dial a three for an outside line, and almost all of those from within the building on our, on our lines for the district have stopped, so.
Yeah, most of them, though, are.
Most of them are student.
And the, the, the neat thing is that gives us a great opportunity to have a conversation with that kid or some of the kids around that kid about emergency communications and how that works. Because if you dial 911 and then you hang up, and then you don't answer when they call back, they call me on the radio because your phone pinged to within 50 feet of 604 Belmont. And then they say, this is the phone number they called, and then I use some of my resources and find out who that kid is and where they're at. And then I go walk into their classroom, I say, is everybody okay? And then everybody looks at me like, what? I said, your phone called 911, is everybody okay? I don't have any repeat offenders.
You know, in closing, I just want to say thank you to these two guys for what they do. They are a great resource, as you see in this report, and it is neat to see the reaction and relationships they build with kids. And I want to stress, I mean, number one, when we go to hire our SROs, it's a partnership with the sheriff's department, so we're part of the process, and we're doing the interviewing to find the people who are the right best fit for our kids and making sure it's a safe environment. And as you know, Pete has been a long time with, has fostered kids, cares about kids deeply. And Jamie now being a PD student originally at one point, he's also still a coach for us. So it's not just being an SRO, it's about caring about kids, and it has been a great relationship. And what's nice is, you know, we're dealing with a situation with our parking lot right now. And today, just you call Jamie, Jamie, get ahold of the county, see what you can figure out, how can we work through some things? It's nice to have that resource available at our fingertips, or he can call Bettendorf right away and get information from Bettendorf and let us know. So it's just, it helps us be effective in a more efficient manner. So appreciate both of them for what they do for our kids.
Thank you. Sorry they bothered you Saturday night.
No, no, I was already working anyway.
Are you okay?
I was doing something else, but I, yeah, I, I appreciate that kind of stuff. And like Mr. Struce says, that's the kind of relationship that the sheriff's office wants to have with the school district as well, is that, that we're all partners in, in reality, that's still dealing with, with kids and, and, you know, we're not in school, but we still got some things we can teach, you know? So it's great.
Thank you.
And I always give Pete our time, many times he's just, he's a counselor to kids at the high school, junior high sometimes, at the elementary level, that's kind of what his role is. He's going to be helpful.
One last thing, I'm sorry that I didn't, I'm not trying to drag it up. But from a truancy standpoint this year, I know it was a challenging year when it comes to that. I only had one student at the high school that was truant, and through all of the incredible efforts Mr. Jones put together and all of our partners at the school, we still had to go back a second time with the site, with the, with the truancy charge, but not for lack of effort on our part, believe me. And that's the only student at the high school we had the entire year, and I think at the junior high you didn't have any.
We didn't have any, there, there were, doesn't mean there weren't issues.
But, yeah.
You know, the, the biggest struggle was the county attorney's office this year. I'm not throwing anybody into the bus there. So far, backlog with the court system, having to choose, you know, okay, we've got this assault with a baseball bat, and we got this, which we're going to take because we don't have time. And also, the state code doesn't see that if you're absent three, if you're late three times, that's an absent. And they also don't see that not logging in when you're at home online, which I think it should be, my personal belief, but is also not a truancy issue, it's more of a grade issue according to the, the way that the law, the law of truancy, that, you know, you got criminal, and then you've got, you know, school rules. So this year has been kind of difficult with that, and, and we're, Mr. Faw, Deputy Faw, I are working to try to nip that in the bud this year so kids know we need to get back to business as usual as long as we're in school. So that's, that's the issue with the truancy, if you see in a chart, I don't know, he's, he likes pie. I just gave you the numbers, you can do it yourself. The, if, if it looks like the truancy is, you know, down or was higher one year, we're trying to keep it from bouncing all the way back up. We want to kind of get them back in and keep them going, so we're always looking to improve.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys.
Appreciate it.
I'll take a motion then.
I move the board accept the student resource officers' report for the 2021-22 school year as presented.
Actually, it is the 2021.
Man, actually, yes. 2020-21 school year as presented. Second.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Anderson, that the board accept the student resource officers' report for the 2020-21, 2021 school year as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Haskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes. The next item, Mr. Zimmer, is Transition Alliance Program, otherwise known as TAP.
Mr. Zimmer, could you hear that you, Mr. Dr. Wugley, has invited you to speak about the TAP program?
I did not hear that.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay.
Do you hear that now?
Yeah, we're ready for you.
Yes.
Okay. The Transitional Alliance Program Coordinator position. I was approached about this last year, and with the COVID situation came up, opted not to spend much time with that as it is a joint partnership with Volk Rehab regarding work experience placement for our students with an IEP. But that one time, obviously, everything was closed down, so we didn't pursue that. But now where we're at right now is we're revisiting this partnership that would allow us to provide work experience, job shadowing, job coaching, supports for our students up to age 25. And that's where the Volk Rehab normally would be picking a student up once they graduate high school, whatever the age is, then it becomes a responsibility of Volk Rehab to do that. Well, as with many service organizations, their dollars are stretched tight, and the number of personnel that they have to be able to provide that support becomes very difficult. So this agreement with local school districts becomes a great partnership, especially when they tap into folks that we have with that expertise to be able to look at this. So this is an information meeting right now with our next board meeting. You would be presented with an opportunity to look at the financial agreement and responsibilities for what that would look like. But we wanted to make you aware that we've had the conversation. We had to perform a gap analysis to find out where our strengths are at with our special education program now when it comes to job coaching and, and work experience. And that was identified, and that was presented to Volk Rehab. They evaluated the gap analysis, and we were just informed last week that our proposal to enter into this agreement or explore it was approved. So it's moving very, very quickly, but wanted to let you know that that's where we're at right now.
Great. Any questions regarding that? Okay, there's no, there's no required motion on that. Next is the monthly financial reports, Mr. Crennesson.
All right, here at the end of May, we have just one month left now in our fiscal year, which our fiscal year ends June 30th in two days. I didn't really notice anything new on the May monthly financials that's unusual that I haven't presented the other months of this year. The same things that kind of stand out are in the nutrition fund. Again, food sales, of course, are down 68.9% from a year ago because of students getting free lunches this year. But then our federal reimbursement is up 298.5% from But then our federal reimbursement is up two hundred and ninety-eight point five percent from a year ago. So if you look at our total revenue through the end of May in the nutrition fund, you can see it matches up very closely to what our total revenue was in the nutrition fund a year ago. Um about eight thousand dollar difference there. Eight thousand more dollars in revenue in the nutrition fund this year than we had a year ago. And of course, at the end, at the end of May, we were pretty much at the end of the school year, so it'd only be a few days in June. Um the only other fund that I've pointed out in previous months that um was affected, you know, by COVID-related stuff is the activity funds, where total revenue in the activity funds at the end of May is twenty point six percent lower than a year ago. But likewise, total expenses in the activity fund at the end of May was twenty point two percent lower than a year ago. So um those are the only two things that stood out to me as um unexpected, or not unexpected, but unusual um for the monthly financials at the end of May. One of, just a reminder, as I said, June thirtieth is our end of our fiscal year. And so I will not be presenting the June, July, and August monthly financials as we've done in the past until probably the first board meeting in September, or maybe the second board meeting in September, after our auditors have been here to do our perform our year-end audit.
Okay. Any questions regarding the monthly financial reports?
Maybe I'm not thinking of this correctly, but when you were comparing the nutrition fund and they're kind of, I mean, they're clearly close. Aren't they actually a little further apart because we didn't have income in the nutrition fund for two and a half months in two thousand twenty? Do you know what I mean? So like the, we would have actually, our income in the nutrition fund in May, about twenty would have been much, would have been higher. So actually, the discrepancy made, like our income is actually down more than we.
And we probably haven't, you know, there's a little bit of a delay on when we request the federal reimbursement this year and when we actually receive it, so.
That might be part of it, too.
There will probably be, I'm I'm pretty sure there will be more federal reimbursement coming here in June when we look at the June financials that'll actually make the, you know, the two thousand twenty-one numbers look closer to what two thousand twenty would have been if we hadn't had those couple of months of no revenue.
Thank you.
Good, good point.
Any other questions? If not, I will take a motion on the finance, monthly financial reports.
I move the board accept the monthly financial reports for May as presented. Second.
Motion, Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Dixon, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for May as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Eris?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Conkle?
Yes.
Dr. Wogly?
Yes. Okay, that um ends the um public session of the meeting. And so we are going to go into an executive session now.